All right, we'll let them come in real fast. Come on in. Okay, we're going to call our January 24 meeting to order. If you'll please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And tonight's kind of a fun night. We are going to be awarding a citizen recognition award. And just as a little reminder, we started this last year to recognize citizens in our community that represent what our community is about, that do good things but maybe you just don't know about. And so tonight, we are going to be awarding another citizen recognition award, and this one is going to Shawna Ogle. And so we're going to be showing a video here with Ms. Ogle. Shawna Ogle is receiving the citizen recognition award in honor of her tireless work and dedication with the Stillwater community, specifically with Relay for Life.
Well, I've been involved with Relay for Life since 2003. I was diagnosed with cancer in 2003, breast cancer. And my involvement with Relay began then just on a team. And that was started with my friends for me. And since then, I've just participated every year. So we've participated, I guess, 10 years now.
With her friend's support and her team, Team Shawna, they have raised $100,000 up to this point for the American Cancer Society. She has also been involved with planning for Relay for Life events and active in recruiting other teams to participate over the years.
Stillwater has done well with Relay. We're actually currently the number three relay in the state of Oklahoma as far as money raised. And I think that's something to be said for the Stillwater community because Stillwater also has Relay for Life at Oklahoma State. So they have one, and then we have one as a community.
Shawna is one of the many Stillwater residents making a difference in the community, and it is being recognized.
From the day of her diagnosis, I mean, she just turned the focus towards everybody else. I mean, it was never on her. And so it's like, okay, yeah, I've got to get this treatment. But, okay, we're going to go raise money, we're going to do this. And so we rallied around her, but she was the one that was spearheading everything.
In addition to her involvement with Relay for Life, Shawna was an active member of Junior Service League, serving as the chair of Operation Christmas. She is also active in her church, serving as a leader for a group of junior high girls. In her professional life, Shawna provides services to many children at Westwood Elementary School as a speech pathologist for Stillwater Public Schools.
Shawna, I've known Shawna for probably about 10 years now. And I think that Shawna is a sparkling example of the qualities that I think Stillwater represents.
Congratulations Shawna, and thank you for your service to the Stillwater community.
Thank you.
How embarrassed are you?
Pretty embarrassed.
Pretty embarrassed. No, Shawna, you are a very, very worthy recipient of this award. And we've got a certificate here for you.
Thank you.
And we actually, since your husband couldn't make it tonight, we've got a couple copies of the video that you can take home also.
Thank you.
So anyway, congratulations, and you're very worthy of this award.
Thank you. Thank you.
Want to say anything?
I was, I guess I am a little embarrassed to be receiving this award because it's mainly these girls right back here that nominated me and that surround me with friendship and love. And Stillwater's a wonderful community to live in. And I have wonderful friends. And so just with a support group like that, how can you not succeed?
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
They're not going to stay? They're not, they're not going to stay? That's the fun part of this job. Let me put it that way. That is, that is wonderful. As we get going here, Councilman Weaver is not present tonight. He is working at his day job with a border regions meeting, so that's why he is not present tonight. Okay, let's move down to the consent docket. And we have items A through E on the consent docket. Does any councilor wish to remove any item off the consent docket?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Is there a move?
Move the acceptance.
I'd second.
Motion is second to approve consent docket. And that passes four to zero. And that takes us down to public hearings. On that item A of the public hearing, there's a staff memo that's asking, I believe there's a notice or a legal description question, so that we need to have a motion to continue that item to February 4th. Is there such a motion?
I would make a motion to move that to February 4th, sir.
I'll second it.
Motion is second to continue to February 4th. And that passes four to zero. Item B, the applicant has withdrawn their application, so I'm just letting everyone know that application's not theirs, so there won't be a public hearing on that. And that takes us to item C, a public hearing for Oklahoma Alumni Association of Alpha Gamma Row for a MAP amendment. Did we get good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful.
Good evening. Patty Evans, Development Services. And before I get started, I have something I'd like to pass out to you that I received today from the applicant. This item is a MAP amendment requested by Alpha Gamma Row located at 224 South Washington and 223 South Jefferson. The property consists of four parcels with three owners. It is bounded on the east by Washington Street, the south by Third Avenue, and on the west by Jefferson Street. The property is currently zoned RMU, multi-family urban residential, as is the properties to the north, west, and partially on the south. The requested zoning is CB, commercial business, which is adjacent to the property on the east and partially on the south. The land use plan, the corridor redevelopment plan, and the neighborhood plan all support this CB zoning. The structure fronts onto Washington while the three parcels behind the structure contains the parking for AGR and two other fraternities. AG, excuse me, AGR plans to construct a larger new building in the same location as the current building, and that is the site plan that I handed out. The applicant wanted you to see that what the current building is, it's shown there in the red or orange color. And then the building, or proposed building, is the wide hatched line. They could not meet the setbacks in the RMU, and that's why they are requesting the CB zoning. They plan to build a multi-story parking garage at a later date on the parking lot area. And the CB zoning does allow both uses of the fraternity and a parking garage. The proposed CB commercial business zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plans. Most properties fronting on Washington Street along the strip are zoned CB. And the proposed zoning would allow for the redevelopment of the property. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions right now?
Just, I've had a question ask me, so it's not my question per se, but I'll ask it. There was the understanding of some individuals that I associate with that CB does not allow for residential living. It's what some developers have told me anyhow, historically. And this, this is not my, I want to make clear, it's not my question.
It does allow multi-family.
Okay.
So, yeah, it does allow residential.
Any other questions at this point?
Then I've got an answer. Thank you.
We do have two requests to speak in favor of it. Ralph Kinder.
Good evening, Council. Ralph Kinder with SMC Consulting Engineers. I'm here with Steve Bockus from, I'm sorry, Steve Bothell from Bockus Payne. He's the architect on the project. I don't necessarily have any comments in favor of it. I'm just here available for questions if you have any.
Do you have any questions of the applicant?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Bothell?
Good evening, council members. As said, I am Steve Bothell. I'm with Bockus Payne Architects out of Oklahoma City. We have been given the job to propose a new structure. We're planning that it will be a beautiful structure. It will enhance the view of South Washington Street. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We didn't have, there's no one signed up to speak against this proposal, so we'll call staff back up.
At its regular meeting on January 8th, 2013, the Planning Commission voted five to zero to accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the MAP amendment as presented.
And just really one quick question. With this, I mean, this is just a MAP amendment, a rezone. There's no plan submitted. There's, so, any of the traffic study, drainage, all that, that's coming in the future with building plans?
Right, we've had, yes, that's correct. We've had a pre-app meeting with them, and that came up, that's when they showed us the site plan, and we said, well, you can't meet the setbacks and discuss what they needed to do. And so, no, they have not submitted any building plans or site plan or anything.
Questions just of the rezone? Okay. Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right. Any discussion, or is there a motion to be made on this?
I would happily move approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, or to accept recommendation? And that passes four to zero. Okay, next one, public comment, text amendment to the Land Development Code. Ms. Dennis, did we get good notice?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Paula Dennis in Development Services. What is in your packet, and I understand that the actual proposed text that we are proposing and Planning Commission has seen and reviewed, was a little delayed in being delivered to the council. But I just have a brief presentation, and then we can open it at your discretion to public hearing, and I'll be able to answer any questions you may have. We have a number of sections in the Land Development Code that we are proposing to clarify the code, clean up the code, and address some of the concerns that have been identified from, primarily from staff. There have been some involvement with the citizens in the identification of these. Just a couple of items of interest. These code changes are a means to encourage commercial infill and redevelopment. If you had an opportunity to read through those, you would see that there's a lot of changes that will benefit the infill and the redevelopment throughout our community. Another is recognition of the technology and customer need changes. As we know, technology is always changing. Code does not change as quickly as technology does, so this is an opportunity for us to play a little bit of catch-up there. And also, validation of the fluid dynamics of zoning law. We have committed over the years that the zoning law is not static. It's not a this is what you get, and that's all you're ever going to get. We do encourage, if there are changes recognizable, that we proceed with making those as appropriate for the city of Stillwater. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have without going through the 20-some-odd code changes we have.
Now, the attachment, I mean, the specific changes, there, I mean, I, there are a lot of these that I like, and I know this is kind of a blanket statement, which I know can be dangerous, but the theme that I got from these, it actually was reducing the impact. And the example I'd give is the reduction from the utility easement, where we, the proposed change, taking it from a, with a single utility easement, taking it from 15 to 10 feet. And so it's giving people more, access to more of their land. Is that a?
Yes, we have, thank you for bringing that up. We actually spoke with Stillwater Electric Utilities staff this afternoon, late this afternoon, and we are going to be asking that that section not be included at this time.
Horrible example for me to bring up.
And thank you for doing that. But I'll go back to your opening of the statement, that you like these text changes.
Let's talk about alleys then.
Okay, we'll talk about alleys.
The proposed change in here, would you explain that change on how to deal with alleyways? Or how this change deals with alleyways?
We have two changes on alleyways. The first one is very simple. Next to an alleyway, current Land Development Code says that that is considered your front as well as any other right-of-way that you are, your property is adjacent to and abuts. Therefore, you have the same front setback. Well, alleys typically are not built and constructed for primary traffic and access, nor are they as wide in the width of that alley. So we are proposing, first thing, to reduce the front setback along alleys from the 20 or 25-foot requirement to 10. So that's a great example of being able to further utilize your private property and not have a real impact detrimentally to the function of the alley itself. The other proposal that we have before you is, we're actually quite excited about it. This had come up a couple of years ago when we had a lot of reinvestment looking at commercial properties, and they were proposing to take their primary access along the alley, but the alley was unimproved. It may be a gravel alley, may have, you know, be completely unimproved and just designated on a plat somewhere that it is a right-of-way in the form of an alley. So the code requires, still does until this changes, that if you're going to take access from that alley, then it is your responsibility as the developer and the private property owner to improve that alley to the city standard, paving it.
The entire alley, or just?
Along your entire frontage.
Okay.
From the intersecting street up to your frontage and then along your frontage. So if you're not a corner lot, you're getting to pave it for everyone else. What this change proposes is that if it is a commercial project and the project is increasing the size of the existing principal structure, or adding a structure or parking or loading area to the property, that is now the trigger that will require the alleyway improvement. Otherwise, if you're just a commercial business and you want to move into that building that's zoned commercial, and you're taking access from the alley that's always been there, you do not have to make those alley improvements. We see this as a good economic incentive for redevelopment in a lot of the underutilized commercial areas that we have in town, especially right around the core.
I've got a couple other questions. Does anybody else have questions? Unit ownership or condominium ownership was scratched from several?
Yes.
Zoning classifications. Why is that?
We're not scratching the use. This is, condominium unit ownership is simply a form of ownership. That is not a use of property. The use of the property is going to be single-family residential, multi-family, commercial office, whatever. Those uses are still allowed. It's just we had put in condo unit ownership as a use, and we're just cleaning that out and removing it. It is still allowed in the subdivision regulations as a form of ownership.
Wonderful. And then there was, in watching the Planning Commission, boy, they took a long time with these.
Yes, they did, individually.
There was a lot of discussion concerning the definition of flag lot.
Yes.
Could you explain what the end result of that was, what we have here on paper?
The end result is that we have further recognized, again, since the Land Development Code was adopted in '08, that we are not allowing the creativity in the layout of land to be divided. What flag lots do is it allows that additional creativity, so maybe the lots may not have to be an acre deep and only 100 foot wide, but now you can have your property at the front with the little driveway and the pole of the flag running back behind. So it's an opportunity to increase density on the same amount of land as the zoning code allows, instead of having really large, long, deep, narrow tracts of land.
And then really my last question, I just want to confirm that I'm reading this correctly. And the one I'm specifically looking at here is under the RSS, the residential, single-family small lot, under the bulk regulations. Item 3 is being removed with maximum lot coverage of 40 percent. Could you explain what removing that really does?
Certainly. We actually, this came from a citizen in the community, builder and developer who, because of the way that they are accustomed to developing their site, there is a lot of open space in their development. So they just threw out the proposal, well, what if I use some of that open space that I am voluntarily leaving undeveloped for it to count towards the open space requirement of individual lots or the total subdivision? Staff met and discussed, even ran this through the Land Development Ad-Hoc Committee, of different ways to possibly approach that. Without being administratively heavy and tracking and following and formulas and all that kind of stuff written into the code, what we determined was that we currently in every zoning district have setbacks, front, rear, and sides. Those establish an envelope within which the principal building can be set. Those in and of itself are more than adequate to provide the necessary open space for running drainage from one lot to a drainage channel, or a street, or running electricity, or any other utility through there, putting up fences, keeping property separations, whatever. So we just decided that in the small lot, single-family, where you're going to have the, obviously, smaller lots, the more dense areas, that just using that building envelope and not having this is as big as you can cover of that building envelope would be more prudent to this community.
Okay, so setback lines will determine?
Yes.
Buildable space as opposed to having setback lines and then a percentage of buildable space that you can actually use?
Yes.
I've got one question going back to alleys. I just, maybe it went over my head or something. I have a commercial building A over here, commercial building C over here, and I'm in the middle. Now, the alley's unimproved, but I want access, I want to use it, the middle one, I want to use it. Does that mean I have to improve the whole alley at this point, or just the area that I, that's my jurisdiction?
Current code says that if it is unimproved from the closest intersecting street? Then you will have to improve all the way up to your property and then all the alley across your property frontage. So you would be improving yours and however many were between you and the nearest intersecting street.
So the new, if it's approved, would do what?
Unless, if you're just moving right into that building, and you're not making any addition, you're not adding additional parking or loading space or additional structures, you do not have to improve the alley.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? We didn't have anyone sign up to speak in favor or against, so I guess we'll open and close a public hearing.
Planning Commission is recommending approval of these changes.
And Planning Commission had, they voted on each one, didn't they?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Just making sure of that.
They had discussion on each one and then voted on each one. Yes.
That was a long viewing time for the Planning Commission. But they, I mean, they attacked it well. They did. We know of at least one change you guys are wanting to make, and that was the utility authority.
Yes, sir.
So I guess you're just looking for some consensus to bring us back the ordinances, and then we'll vote on ordinances? Is that where we're at?
We'll be happy to bring them back.
Okay. You guys good with that? All right.
Yes, sir.
Bring us some ordinances, and we'll check them out.
Do we have a timeline for this?
As soon as they're ready.
We can bring them back at the next meeting. They're practically ready now. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. That's going to take us down to resolution number CC 2013-1. Authorization participation with Department of Transportation, roadway improvement project. Fill us in on this one?
I can. Am I microphone on?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. Yeah, this is basically for the intersection improvements, including traffic signal on North Perkins Road where the Aldi's supermarket is going to be constructed. It's State Highway 177. It's under jurisdiction of ODOT. And so in order to make those improvements within the ODOT right of way, we need to enter into an agreement with them. Even though those improvements will be funded by Aldi's as the local jurisdiction, we'll be responsible for maintenance of the signal. The roadway improvements, of course, are, would be ODOT's responsibility, but ODOT requires us to enter into an agreement before we can proceed with improvements.
And that's normal for any?
Standard operating procedure. Anywhere in town, on any, any state highway where we're going to do any work or at a traffic signal, we have to enter into agreement with ODOT.
Any questions of staff?
Not at this time, sir.
Is there a motion on this resolution?
I'd move approval.
Second it.
Motion is second to approve this resolution.
Excited to see you again.
I'm coming.
I get there?
That passes four to zero. And that takes us down to ordinances. We have two ordinances. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance 3219, an ordinance rezoning property addressed as 424 West 9th Avenue from RT, Residential Two Family District to O Office District.
And this was our public hearing from last meeting, if I remember correctly.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions about this ordinance?
No, sir.
Motion?
I may we accept ordinance 3219.
Motion is second. Passes four to zero, and then ordinance 3218, Mr. Dorman?
On second reading, an ordinance closing a portion of right-of-way of West Street adjacent to property addressed as 424 Southwest Street.
Any questions on this ordinance? Motion?
I may we approve ordinance 3218.
Second it.
Motion is second on 3218. And also passes four to zero. Takes down to reports. Mr. Dorman?
Couple of items tonight, sir. Request an executive session pursuant to 2501s subsection 307b4 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the pending workers' compensation claim filed by Harold Payne and a pending tort claim filed by Jeffrey Blake Orca. Blake Orcutt. It is my opinion that public disclosure of these matters will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process these claims and/or conduct an investigation and/or to prosecute or defend any resulting litigation proceeding in the public interest.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have tonight, sir.
Okay. Blanketship?
Just real briefly, I'd like to bring you all up to date with regard to drought situation. I know that that's a really high-profile issue in Oklahoma right now. We are very fortunate to have our water source as the Call Reservoir. The Call Reservoir is, at this time, 98 percent full, so we're very pleased with that, unlike other areas of the state that have much lower water supplies. At this point in time, we seem to be in very good shape, but we monitor that on a daily basis. But at this point in time, we don't anticipate having any water shortage issues this summer.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Counselors, anything?
Not this time, sir.
Okay. I've only got a couple. Next Tuesday morning, 8:15, January 29th, Councilor Weaver will be on KSPI, and then on February 5th, I will be on KSPI. And then, our study session that we originally had scheduled for this coming up Monday, so we're in about three days, we have canceled that, and we'll be taking up those items on February 25th, that 's a session then. So, okay, anything for upcoming meetings?
Not this time, sir.
Okay. And that'll take us down to appointments, and we've got quite a few appointments to take up tonight. And we'll just take them board by board. I hope it's in alphabetical order, but we'll see. First one is Airport Authority, and Leroy Smith and Justin Biasu's terms have expired. They both have been doing a wonderful job and would like to serve another term, so I would nominate both Mr. Smith and Mr. Biasu to be reappointed.
So moved.
Okay. That passes four to zero. And that takes us to the Audit Committee. We're going to need, we've got to split this one up, because I'm going to, Kathy Elliott has served a term, and, again, doing a good job, and would like to be reappointed, and so I would nominate Kathy Elliott for reappointment.
So moved.
Is that a second to my nomination?
Second.
That passes four to zero. Then, on the Audit Committee, there are certain requirements on that committee, and one of the spots on that committee must be a person in the banking profession. Rex Horning had been filling that role, and he did not wish to be reappointed, and so I would nominate Jerry Franklin to fill the banker slot in the Audit Committee.
I accept, I move we accept the nomination.
Oh, second.
That passes four to zero. There's a vacancy on the Library Board, and I would nominate Brad, excuse me, Bradley Rickelman to that spot.
I would second your nomination, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That passes four to zero. Stillwater Medical Authority, Calvin Anthony Lolbarto have served a term, and they've been doing a good job, and, again, would like to be reappointed, so I would nominate them for reappointment.
Hold a second.
That passes four to zero. Roll Water Advisory Board, Charles Rice and Jerry Horn, again, they've served a term, and I would nominate them for reappointment.
Second.
That passes four to zero. An ambulance trust authority, the city's representative is a vacant spot, and I would nominate Randall, can't talk tonight, Randall Elliott to that spot.
I'll second your nomination.
That also passes four to zero. Here are our appointments.
I read it.
Okay. So, before we go to executive session, we will recess city council meeting, and I'll call to order the Stillwater Utility Authority meeting. That agenda, we have two items on the consent docket. Does a trustee wish to pull either item? Did I miss something?
I did.
Now, what do I do?
When you reconvene...
Recess this?
No, when you reconvene, you can go back and do it before you move to that spot.
Okay.
Just in a recess.
Okay, well, thank you.
CEDAC.
CEDAC, okay, I forgot that one. I didn't have, had it on a different list. I apologize. We'll come back to it. That's a, I can handle that trip. We can survive that.
You're okay.
Okay, back to utility authority, consent docket. Does anybody wish to pull either item off consent docket? I want to pull B, because I want to say something good about it, so...
I was going to say B, too.
So, is there a motion, is there a motion to approve item A on the consent docket?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, item A is approved four to zero. Item B, Councilor Scott, you, did you want, you said you wanted to pull it also?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. What I wanted to say, what I appreciate, I mean, that's a perfect consent docket item, but what I wanted to bring up about it was, I appreciate city staff not just taking the easy route on this. If you read the report, what it was, it's our failed transformer that they were trying to sell for whatever it could be worth, and they sent out bids and only got one back, and they thought it was worth more than that. And so, instead of just saying yes and shoving the paperwork and moving on down the road, they rejected that bid, which will now allow us to try again, or sell it for scrap at market value instead of bidding. Is that a fair way to put it?
That's a very fair way to put it, yeah. In fact, it's Lauren Smith is our generation transmission manager. He's the individual who's responsible for that, and he's done some research, and feels very strongly that we should be able to get at least two times, if not two and a half times, more than what the single bid that we received.
Anyway, so anyway, I appreciate the extra work that had to go in for the money. Thanks for taking care of the assets. So, anyway, that's the only thing I wanted to say about it.
I agree with everything, sir.
Okay. There are a motion on item B on the consent, that was on the consent docket.
I would move approval.
Second that.
Excuse me, trustee...
Trustee, there we go. Okay, and that takes us, that passes four to zero, excuse me. And that takes us down to general orders. Mr. Blanketship?
Okay, this is an item where we're requesting the trustees to authorize professional services that are necessary for the construction of the Western Road water line. This is a connection from the 56th and Western Tower to the city system at approximately 44th and Western. And I think that we have water utilities staff here this evening that can, I think, Eric Flady, Water Utilities Engineer, will make a presentation for us.
Good evening, trustees, Eric Flady, Water Utilities. As Mr. Blanketship indicated, tonight I'm here to request trustee approval to proceed with design for a one and one-quarter mile-long 18-inch water line. Purpose of this water line is to connect the 56th Tower to our city's water distribution system. This project is the second part to making use of the 56th Tower tank to service and provide expeditiously as possible relief to the Southwest Zone. The first part, of course, is Perkins Booster Pump Station. I briefed you at last trustee meeting. Construction for both of these needs to be completed in December, so ideally, this water line must be completed at the same time the pump station is completed to make use of the system. At the new year, we negotiated a professional services proposal with Guernsey to provide survey, right-of-way services, and design to do this water line. Their design is scheduled to be complete and ready for bid in July of this year. This is in order for construction to start at the earliest opportunity, and this assumes that all easements are obtained. So, there are some easements that we'll have to work through along that route on Western Road. Also, tonight, I want to provide some explanation regarding schedule change. I understand that there was an expectation, a prior expectation, that both these projects would be completed in September of this year. This was based on staff's original intent to issuing notice proceed for design last April. However, also last April, our Southwest Zone study report from Guernsey was received, and it indicated that the original or tentative location for the booster pump station may not be acceptable, might not be a good location. As a result, we postponed issuing notice to proceed in order to further investigate, do some field studies, testing, and verify that site before we invested resources, money, and design effort into that station to make sure it's the right place. That report was completed in August and indicated we can use that site. Within two weeks, we issued notice proceed for design on the booster pump station. This direct slide right on the calendar from April to September is the impact that we see in the now-scheduled construction completion date sliding from September to December of this year. Pending any of your questions, staff recommends the trustees authorize general manager to approve this professional services agreement for the Western water line connection with Guernsey for $110,330, including the 10% contingency.
Trustees have questions?
Not this time, sir.
The pump station that you recommended is the one on Perkins Road and 32nd?
Yes, yes, sir.
And original location where we started out with?
Yes, yes, yes. Test fared out well. Turned out well for us that we actually can use that site.
After five years.
Well, it's one of those, there's no doubt that this is an extremely complex issue with a complex solution, and that, I think that's appreciated. I'm going to reiterate, beat the drum, whatever term that anyone wants to use, on the need to get this done with as few delays and as quickly as possible. And I know some things are unavoidable, but anything that can be sped up, anything that, anything we can do to get this done as quick as possible needs to be done. And I know that's everyone's goal, but it's my job to reiterate it. So, anyway, I do appreciate the work, and I do understand things. I understand what this is about, and so, but I must reiterate that, get after it, so...
Time is of the essence. Understood, Mayor, and if we hit challenges that are beyond our level, of course, we'll elevate that to management and come to you guys for assistance to inspire where needed, provide direction, so we can get things done and meet that intent.
Will do. Thank you.
I very much appreciate Mr. Flade. We brought him on just for this express purpose and the many other projects that we have going, and he's been very diligent in addressing these issues with me, and I feel very confident that he will do everything within his power to bring these projects in on the schedules that they have committed to at this time.
Appreciate that. Any other questions?
On the mayor's comments, I move that we accept your recommendation.
I would second trustee Hopkins' recommendation.
Motion excepting. Second. Thank you.
And I'll be your worst thorn.
Oh, no, you won't.
I got that honor. You guys are going to have to fight before it.
Okay.
That passed, was it four, that was approved four, zero. Okay, those are all the items we have. Let's make sure, is that all the items we have on that agenda?
Yes, sir.
This is the last one, so... Okay, is there a motion to adjourn SUA meeting?
So moved. Second.
And that passes four, zero. SUA is adjourned, and we will reconvene the city council meeting and take up item G under 13, the appointment, and this is the Stillwater Economic Development Advisory Council that we approved two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whenever that was, which is the newly-formed advisory group between Oklahoma State, City of Stillwater, Chamber of Commerce, and Stillwater Industrial Foundation, where each group is to appoint two members to this advisory council. And again, just to explain this CDAC, you know, we love our acronyms, and so, it is simply to provide a method of communication. City is not giving any authority to another group. We're not going to put, take authority away from other groups. This is just to communicate and coordinate economic development from all angles throughout our area. So, with that, I would, as awkward as this sounds, I would nominate Vice Mayor Hopkins and myself to this, to CDAC.
A second.
I also second your nomination.
Second, second.
May I defer to the parliamentarian on proper procedure?
Okay, that passes four to zero. Is that everything?
I believe so, sir. I think you've covered it.
Okay, that takes us down to executive session. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
I move, we move to executive session.
Second.
All right, and that motion passes.